Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Just a few seconds, hopefully early. But December 11th, 2019, Select Board Meeting. Our first item on the agenda tonight is a gift from East Hampton Savings Bank. We have two representatives here, Hadley residents. And do you guys want to explain?
Sure.
The donation?
There you go.
I don't know where we go.
We have a check here. So I'm the manager for the branch in Hadley. And Paul is the government banking for East Hampton Savings Bank in Hadley. And we're very pleased to announce that East Hampton Savings Bank wants to donate $25,000 to the town of Hadley. This is going to be part of our, the projects of the senior center, of the ball fields for Hopkins Academy, and also for the library project. So we have three projects, all very great projects, and we want to participate in all things.
And the ball fields project and the library project will be distributed over two years, $5,000 for two years. And also the remaining $5,000 will be going to the COA. And they decided to buy a giving tree for all the donations that they're going to take. And so we're going to be financing or paying for the giving tree that will be in the new senior center. So it's our way of saying thank you, the residents of the town of Hadley, and to the town of Hadley itself for all that they've done for East Hampton Savings Bank for over the past 20 years.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Do we deposit that at the ranch?
I don't think I'm going to run to the deposit.
Thank you very much. Yeah, your pleasure. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
And now we will move into the consent agenda. We have a warrant, AP 2023V. We have a Chapter 61A barstow right of first refusal and waive 120-day waiting period. We have completion of probationary period, Scott McCarthy. And then we have two police, one retirement, one hiring. I'll just hold that right now, and you can say that, chief. And then we have a memorandum of understanding with the treasurer. They have a motion.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chief, if you want to...
Okay. I prepared something to read, but I decided that I didn't want to go that route. I've been friends with Ken for a very long time, so I'm just going to kind of go off the cuff and figure I'll be able to get through it better that way. Ken has been with, he's been in law enforcement for over 30 years. He came, he went full-time with us in 2011, and he responded to Sergeant in 2016. And being in policing nowadays is not the way that it was when, when he first started. It's not how it's cracked up to be anymore. So when I look at someone like Ken, who stuck it out for as long as some of our officers have been alive.
Longer.
It's impressive, to say the least. Ken is retiring, well-deserved retirement. His last workday with us will technically not be until January 3rd. His last day employed by the town of Hadley will be January 8th. But Ken likes to go risk life and limb in Florida and play baseball, so he's not going to be around for those dates. So we appreciate the board taking this up early. And we also have his hopeful replacement here, as far as the office position goes. We're going to have trouble filling this, the void that he's leaving, not just because of, you know, being a police officer, but also supervision. As I, as I was saying earlier, you know, being a police officer nowadays is not, not what it, what it used to be. It's, it's much more difficult. It's, it's a job that no one, kind of, no one notices all the good that you do until you screw up one time, and then everyone knows. It's very similar to how the officials were in the Patriots game last week. But that's kind of what, what makes, that's, I look at it as me being lucky for that part of the job. And people like Mitch, we're lucky because we do get to see the good things. Unfortunately, they're not publicized, but we get to see people like Ken, you know, and several of our officers doing the good that they do in our community. You know, just the calm voice on the phone if it's something, you know, as simple as that, or, you know, helping an elderly lady down some icy steps to, out to her car, like some of our officers did a couple of weeks ago. So he's going to be missed, and I would respectfully request that the board approve his well-deserved retirement tonight.
I'm going to say something a little bit. Try to maintain my composure. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of you for letting me serve this community for the last decade. To Chief Mason, Lieutenant Cook, Sergeant Green Romano, thank you for allowing me to be part of your management team. You're truly the best. To the officers that are here, mostly to be sure that I'm actually going to retire. Thank you for everything you do for this department and for the citizens of this great town. To the Select Board, thank you. Your support of the police department has been outstanding, and I hope that you continue to support this fine organization. I've worked for several area police departments in several communities over the last 35-plus years, and this department is by far the best. Thank you.
Good job.
Ross, daddy.
Congratulations, Ken. Don't cry. Don't you cry. Thank you very much.
Then that leaves me open to say a few words also, because you said that. So I'll try to compose myself also. Having been the representative to the police department, it has been an honor to work with you over the last few years that I have had the opportunity to. You certainly are a dedicated police officer. You have high integrity for the department, and it's just been a joy to happily work for us for the town of Hadley.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. I told the gentleman behind you, Captain Cartlidge, and his son said I was going to say no, they weren't going to let you retire. But when you work in this line, I think everybody, whether it be medical or police fire, you all deserve to retire at a good time in your life. So I wish you a happy retirement.
Thank you very much.
And I wish you a better batting average.
I can still hit the ball.
That's all that matters.
I told my kids I stopped playing when I couldn't do it anymore. I can still do it. My wife has other ideas.
And we hope to see you at the senior center.
Oh.
Who told her to say that?
I'd just like to also point out that now that I'm retiring, that Officer John Robitaille will now be the oldest member of the department, so now he can face all of the same guff that I've taken over. I'm trying to be a nice statement.
Well, so I would make a motion that we accept the retirement of Sergeant Ken Hartwright.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thought you were going to say no, Ken.
Well, I'm hard-burging on him.
Thank you.
So with that, a vacancy has opened in the agency, not only for the police officer position, but also for Sergeant. Sergeant is going to be a little bit more difficult shoes to fill, but we had two amazing part-time officers that we brought on recently, that's Tenzin, and this is Brendan. Unfortunately, well, I guess maybe fortunately for me, the decision was easy because they're both phenomenal candidates, and I would have loved to hire both of them, but Tenzin didn't yet qualify for a waiver. Brendan does. So it's just kind of the way it worked out this time. But if you remember, Brendan was appointed as a special in July. He currently resides in Greenfield and graduated from high school on Prince Edward Island, Canada. Next month, he will complete his associate's degree in criminal justice from Greenfield Community College. And Brendan completed his Reserve Police Academy training in 2018. And in addition to working as a special for us here in Hadley, he's been working for the Gosham Police Department as a reserve officer since February. He's also worked as a carpenter for Ricky Bermucci Construction and volunteered for Safe Passage as a call taker on their domestic violence crisis line. Following his potential appointment to full-time, he will begin preparations to extend the full-time police academy later this year. So with that, I would like to recommend Brendan Smith as the vacancy after Sergeant Hartwright vacates his position in January and Brendan hits his waiver mark, he would be the replacement.
The motion says that Brendan Smith is their next full-time police officer.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Can I have executive session, but step out, panel?
Yeah.
Do that.
And now we are going to discuss the tri-board meeting, our fiscal year 2021 discussion.
Did we do all of these others? So we asked, we said just different, everything else?
The consent agenda?
Yeah.
Yep, we did all of it. You can do all those. Oh, go ahead. What was, was there one you wanted to take back?
No, I don't want to take back.
You wanted to talk about one?
I certainly agree. I've heard positive feedback about Scott McCarthy and completing his probationary period. So I wanted to say welcome to him, you know, after he's finished it. He's not here this evening, but I just wanted to step in and say, I think, is this the right time to do that, maybe?
Sure.
DPW are looking to put in another foreman. I would like us to seriously take a look at not doing that right now. I think we need DPW workers more than we need another foreman. So I would like to bring that and keep that in the radar for right now, instead of having them jump into doing a foreman thing. So that being said.
And Scott's at a class up in Greenfield tonight, working. I did see him today, and he's happy to be here.
Great.
Came from Dietz, and he's liking Hadley so far, so it's a pleasant thing.
Great.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we can go into the tri-board meeting. Got the finance committee meeting here, the school, school here. You know, and the main topic was to discuss how we want to review the budget this year. Last year, we all kind of met together and reviewed the budget simultaneously, but, you know, I don't know if we wanted to do it. I know there was some expression to do it differently this year. You guys wanted to kind of do your own review with the departments or divisions rather than with the Select Board.
So we've done it both ways. I mean, so since I've been doing the finance committee, we've done it where we would have meetings with the departments, you would have meetings with the departments. We've done it where just you had us do the meetings, and then if there was something special, or there was something besides for just the straight asks, then, then you would want to know what they were, and you'd have a special meeting for just that. And then last year, we did it where you had it, and then we were here as well. But I think that especially too, we are trying to get a couple more people, and there are a couple people that are potential finance committee people that Randy had, he's looking at. I felt like, I think it'd be a little bit better if we could have, because too, your meetings are so lengthy, and you have so much more to them than just that one topic. Where when we would have a meeting, we just have that one topic. And that would be it. It's shorter, and it's, and we just have just that item. So we would like to do all of it.
It's your call, it's your, you know, your committee, you know, so...
So whether or not you want to do it as well, or if you want us just to report back to you on each one, and if there's a problem, you meet with them at that point.
That'll be fine. It's your job.
What do you guys want to do? Do you want to meet with each of the divisions to review the budget? There were certain things we wanted to put in the budget this year, mention of things with the DPW. You know, without that kind of face-to-face time with the divisions, you know, we wouldn't be able to interact directly. So I don't know if we'd want to do that in addition to, you know, those, those department heads or whatnot coming in, having two meetings to go to as opposed to one.
I think if there's something controversial, such as what we're taking on as our agenda this year, and what department that we're focusing on, maybe that's the department that we really want to get with really gritty on. And certainly if some other departments have things that they want to bring to us, then that would be fine too, after they've met with you. But I see no problem with the finance committee.
A lot of them are cookie cutter, but there are some important issues that need to be discussed by both boards, you know?
Sure.
I think the priority department or division budget area, I guess you could say, for that year should come to us, just because that way we're focusing on them. But other than that, I mean, take it and run with it. And then if there's anything that, we're talking about a planner, I guess that would fall under general government or full-time planning.
Right, right. So we should talk about that.
We should talk about that. But other than that, the rest of general government should be just, say, last year pretty much, right?
Sure, yeah.
Like, so everything, I think, you have department heads, if they are asking for something, you know, and they don't feel that there's unanimity or whatever, then they should have the opportunity to come and kind of plead their case, if you will.
Right.
But yeah, I think it makes sense for you guys to...
Okay.
And...
You don't need us to vote on that. We're just saying, oh...
Yeah, we're just trying to figure out...
Yeah, so we'll set up a meeting, and then we'll set up with David, and we'll have it scheduled.
Do a schedule.
The schedule. And then after that, we will have some type of meeting where we'll come back and report to you and let you know what's going on, and if there is something that needs to be discussed.
And they're open meetings, so, I mean, in the past, when I was over there, it wasn't unusual for a Select Board member might go, you know, say, they're not a meeting, you know?
I was just going to say, the only thing is, we got to make sure that we give you time to do your part far in advance enough so that way we can meet after the fact with you, DPW or whoever, and go to our portion, that's all.
Right.
Yeah, I was going to ask, maybe if you could just give us a schedule, when you think you could meet with people, and then we can kind of put that into our schedule so that then we can have a, a meeting, you know, in advance of town meeting to talk about this and follow up with any issues.
Sure, we could probably start it right af, with David, right after he gets everything, as soon as he's ready.
Yeah, so I'll work with you, and we'll come up with a schedule, communicate to the Select Board on that.
Okay.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Well, just a quick logistical question. Do you want to be meeting here, or do you want to meet at the public safety complex?
I don't know, but the public safety complex did work well when we did do that. There's no, we don't have to worry about if there's a conflict, since this is the only room, so...
Except for the chief.
Schedule through a chief.
But the chief is always very accommodating.
Me, too. Would that be on weekends, or would that be during the week?
I'm sure yet, but we would talk to you and see what, you know, and if it's not available here, of course, but I, I thought it was...
Yeah, I'll work it out, and we'll make the reservation.
Okay.
We're talking months in advance, I'm sure everything is open up as planned.
Yeah, we're known.
Annie, from a school standpoint, I was just going to ask, that when you're scheduling for no other reason than the school committee has to, has to be the starting point, that if I could just weigh in with you and David on what that timeline looks like on our end?
Sure.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's no problem. I just want to make sure that I get my meetings lined up, so the school committee...
Oh, yeah, because you have several, right? Yeah.
And anything new on the school front this year that we can expect, or just...
No, there's really nothing going on. No, there's nothing major.
Yeah.
Nothing major, which I usually expect in terms of...
They did do the complete redo of the Chapter 70 program, so...
They did, yeah. Although that'll be a phase in over time, and there'll be some benefits to that, and there'll be benefits to the town. The increase has to do with, overall, it's an increase, it's good news. As I point out all, all the time, I am grateful that the town will see additional revenues, and the entire school department is keenly aware of the fact that this town is incredibly generous and funds the school above required contribution. You folks have been very, very good to the schools, we know that, and we appreciate it. And so it could translate into additional revenues into the town side. I don't think it will be a windfall. The changes to the formula are not going to result in a windfall for the town of Hadley, given our size and our demographics.
Yeah.
How's the SBAB going with the locker rooms and things like that?
So we heard today from MSBA, we have not been invited in to, and school committee, if you're watching, I was going to email you that today, we have not been invited in to this round. However, when I spoke, the last time I spoke with MSBA, they said, nobody gets invited in on the first round. So they always encourage people to try again. That'll be a conversation that I have with school committee, because there are certainly implications for the capital plan. I would want to think seriously about if there is an opportunity to have some of the costs offset through grant funding. I would definitely want us to consider that carefully, because, just obviously, paying attention to what taxpayers have to pay out in their pockets.
So when's the next opportunity?
So it happens about the same time every year. The invitation usually comes, we submitted this application in, I want to say, I worked on it over the summer, and I feel like we submitted it in September, and then notified in December if you're invited in. So it's, it only happens once a year. It could be, I don't have the email right in front of me, it could be off on that timeline, but I think they do it at about the same time every year.
Okay. So discussing with the, just curious, if discussing with the school committee, are you going to be discussing whether or not you want to go this year at election time to put something on the ballot for the locker room?
We had discussed that as, as an option, but I do want to talk to the school committee about what they would recommend being, making the most sense in terms of what we move forward with, and ask folks to vote for, and I talked to the school committee, and either the school committee would then communicate directly with you folks, or have me come back and, and talk with FinCom and the Select Board about what makes the most sense. And certainly hear your perspective as well.
Is that both the locker room and, and unibeds?
Yeah, it was one application. It was one application.
They don't want us to do renovations. I mean, good Lord, they think we take good care of our buildings, and that was years ago, which they ended up giving us money for windows and things of that nature. I don't know why it got named after how many, number of years, you know, that they don't want to let us expand or do anything different.
Yeah, I think it's also, it is a very competitive process, and I will look in more detail. I didn't see the email until I was running the tuning meeting, so I haven't read the response in detail. But our goal is always to look at that feedback and then make the next application better. I will not be defeated. People will get me there, but I won't be.
I know you won't. I have faith in you.
We will step back up to the plate and, and keep trying.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other issues you guys wanted to discuss right now related to the tri-board? That was the main, main intent.
No, I don't have anything.
All set. Everybody else good?
Good for now.
Yeah? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You run back over to the school now.
It's done with pro merita, they did a great job.
Oh, they're done, okay.
They're going to go home and have supper.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Since we have people here from both CPA and municipal building, it looks like, I wanted to kind of collectively have a meeting to discuss the, the possible use of the Goodwin Memorial Library for future municipal use, and...
I don't see all of, are you the only representative, Dave?
I guess.
I didn't know if anybody else was coming.
Tim said he was going to try.
Oh, he was going to try?
Yeah.
I can wait a little bit if we think...
Here's Tim.
Oh, here he is, right here, actually.
Here he is.
I was actually going to ask you guys to kind of start. You guys met with the planning board last night, or did you? And what was kind of the report from that?
Bill's in the building. Was he coming to the meeting?
I think he was headed home.
Oh, was he?
Yeah, he's here for another meeting.
Well, Park and Rec and Planning Board both seem like they'd be happy to go there, because of more space. The only requirement that Planning Board wanted is where their offices...
Yeah.
They needed to have their storage for all their plans, files, in their office, not like three locations, because we're also thinking you'd need a meeting room over there for Planning Board, and that meeting room would also service an activity room for Park and Rec. That was the conversation last night. And then they also brought up, maybe Conservation Commission could be there as well.
Yeah, did they, did they talk about actual repurposing of the building at all, and, you know, applicability to zoning bylaws and that kind of thing?
Well, we talked about putting in, instead of on the second floor, sectioning it off, say, with two-by-fours, maybe cubicles. And then we said we'd get around...
The seismic requirements.
Right.
Rigs.
And then the issue is, no bathroom on the first floor. So we'd either have to put in a temporary bathroom, or go with plans that were drawn up years ago with an elevator on the north side with bathrooms to kind of be an addition. That way it would service all three floors and handicap accessibility to all three floors and use it as need be. But the electrical needs to be updated. We've got knob and tube in there, and the ceiling on the first floor is falling down, and that needs to be taken care of before people move in. So there is money to be spent either way, but it could be somewhat a little, or a lot, and get it done and be ready to go.
Is the floor okay up on the third, second floor?
We use it.
Was the floor okay?
Yeah, it's structurally sound, it can take the loads. The problem is the ceiling's loose from the, from the floor system. So we're, we're trying to keep the use to a minimum, so we don't compromise that ceiling. At some point, this is a good time to do it in two phases, you know, get, get, I think we, we had a really, really good meeting last night, some really good thoughts and suggestions, and who could go in there, where they can go, and, and we can probably do it in two phases if we get the money for that second phase. But certainly, not having the elevator limits the use of it. And we do have a really nice building over there, and it'd be, it'd be sad if we can't utilize it to its best. And we have to have some type of accessibility on it, but I think we can...
And we had talked, we had talked two weeks ago, or sometime around there, about possibly doing like a town meeting space in that main portion of the library. Was that still discussed last, last night?
Yeah.
Or was that, yeah?
Yeah, the whole, I thought, process was to have the, the main floor as a meeting space for everybody. And it could be used for Park and Rec too, for some of their uses. So the, the main discussion was, well, who would function better on what floor, and how, how could we utilize it the best? Certainly, really, it kind of changed throughout this discussion because of Planning Board. They, they wanted to try to keep all their plans together with them, so the suggestion...
They had, they had quite a dead floor load for the second floor with all their files. Like Tim said, well, you'd have to put it on the outside walls, or go in the basement, and they're happy either way. They, they really didn't care, as long as their files are within their office area, and then the first floor could be their meeting space.
There's enough room down there too... There's enough room down there too to allow Jenny, Park and Rec, to utilize some of that space too. And then she can have an office upstairs. Maybe, maybe we can even have Conservation over there. We haven't talked to Conservation, but those are the possibilities.
I think it's a good idea to try to get them over there since they're not full-time here. And those departments that are full-time that need to be in Town Hall probably be a better use of this building versus part-time.
Well, and they also, just from a workflow standpoint, makes not a lot of sense.
So are we gonna have to move TB5 again?
No.
They're gonna stay, right?
Okay.
TB5's very happy where they're at.
Well, good, but nobody mentioned it, so that's why I'm asking.
It's good that you brought it up because, but.
Actually, I went to one of their meetings and they were, they were pretty happy with where they were, so.
Yeah, well, well, the, the Goodwin is, the old library is under renovation for knob and tube and ADA accessibility and all the other things that you talked about. Are we going to have to move, have the media out of there? No, we felt that we could keep them there while most of renovations are being done. Okay? Because of the thought process of, of creating the offices upstairs, it's not actual building. It's going to be a modular system. And we talked about security there, how we can keep security between the different offices. So everybody was very comfortable with a modular type of office system and partitioning it off. And then, you know, so it really probably was, in my opinion, in the 30 years I've been here, probably one of the best meetings we ever had. It was shocking.
Everything just worked, huh?
Yeah. Sounds good.
For the basement, I know that Park and Rec needs storage and we need climate control, the record storage for Town Hall because we're running out of space here. So just in the plans, things to think about, just the secure storage area.
And that, and, and we all felt that that could be all accommodated over there. So our thought process is to get our Larry Total from Architectural Insights to come on over, evaluate the building, talk to the different departments and put their needs together and get something on paper and then we can present it to you. And you'll have some budget figures, so we can have phase one and phase two. And then we make the decision on how far we want to go. But it would be a shame if we can't get full accessibility over there. And Bill Dwyer actually brought up a very valid point. You know, you want to make accessibility, even though that they're, they have the ability to go down the basement right now, maybe at some point, some, one of the members might not be able to do that. So do you want to limit that? So we have to look at that as a, a future goal to try to make sure that we have full accessibility for the.
If it's, if it's a public building, it needs to be accessible to all three levels.
Yeah.
It's just the right thing to do.
I mean, that's, that's just what you have to do.
I mean, that was one reason I, in a previous meeting, I was thinking we should be having a meeting space there that is accessible because this, this meeting room here is not truly accessible. I mean, we have an elevator, but it's problematic and having more space.
Vertical lift.
Yeah.
When was the last time you wrote that?
I, I've only seen people get stuck in it. I've never written it myself.
It's scary.
So, yeah, I mean, we, it would be great to have something that was accessible and where the TV cameras and those kind of things could kind of permanently be installed and not have to set them up and take them down every meeting.
So one, one of the things that I kind of am thinking about, this is my opinion only, we could put a bathroom in there on the first floor, which would be on the north side, I guess we're talking. But when you do that, you kind of mess up the room, especially, you know, it's nice woodwork and whatnot. And we're gonna spend X amount of dollars on a handicap accessible bathroom. And then in, what, two, five, 10 years down the road, you're gonna go and put in a, a real elevator, real bathrooms. And there's money thrown down, basically down the drain. So, you know, I'm pretty conservative. I don't want to see my taxes go up, but I'd rather do it once, do it right versus doing it twice. So it's, it'd be good to think about what we really need for the town. And we gotta do it, we gotta bite the bullet, I guess, at some point. And it'd still be a few years down the road by the time you get funding and design and all.
And it's not gonna be an achiever.
No, well, true.
I was gonna say too, that's a good lead-in to CPA being here and kind of consulting with you guys and seeing what is the best path to move forward, you know? Do you see this as a CPA-eligible project? Would it be good to do it in phases, a design phase and leading into more of a construction phase? Kind of how, how could, how could we leverage CPA to work on a project like this or is it possible? I don't know.
It, it's definitely possible.
Yeah.
It depends, you know, on what the work is gonna be. Certainly the planning aspect is CPA-eligible. You know, the architectural study, CPA money can be used for that, for, you know, proceeding money. Then the actual construction, it depends what you're doing. You know, if you're rehabilitating, if you're restoring or if you're preserving, then CPA money can be used. If you're repurposing, if you're adding, if you're, I don't know what, you know, putting up new ceilings, then that's probably not eligible.
If the ADA compliance is eligible, right?
I'm not sure.
I think.
That might, that's.
Explicitly.
Well, it's for public housing, yes, but for public buildings, I don't know.
But like the wiring upgrades as far as preserving the building for safety, life safety issues, how about that?
Uh, I, I don't know. I'd have to check that out with the coalition, but I think probably do not.
Well, didn't we already get CPA money to do the electrical for the library? Where did we get back?
Uh, that was given back.
Yeah, right, but we lied.
We got approved in the first place.
First place.
It was eligible.
Right, right. So, so I'm not sure.
Maybe these are just sort of the things that you need to, you know, if we make a list for you to have you check into and see if you can.
Right, right. All I can do is work, work with the people on their applications and check with Boston to see if they're permitted and work through the process.
And have you folks written any grants for some, for a project like this, CPA?
Matching funds, you mean?
Matching funds type thing.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, if, if we took the CPA money, X amount of dollars towards this project and we, we were to write a grant for this project to do it all at once, not piecemeal and do it twice, you know? If, if, if at all possible to get any grant money for this, historical preservation or conservation?
Well, parts of money are different and the requirements are different. I mean, certainly you can use grant money and CPA money together on the same project. I don't, I can't recall us ever doing it, but I, I can imagine that that's not, that's not permitted.
Yeah, we did it with the cemeteries actually 10 years ago.
Right, right.
Lyndy, can we borrow against the CPA money for projects?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, you can borrow, you can borrow against the town surcharge portion and, but not the state portion.
Eighty percent, there's a percentage, like eighty percent or something.
Well, we're putting in more than the state is now, so, correct.
Uh, that will change.
She got it back.
In fiscal '21.
It's gonna change back.
Well, it, it, well, the state's gonna increase. I don't know, I don't know what the relative amount.
It was, it, it had waned down.
Right.
And it gone down and actually this, the one we just received was actually a little lower than last year, but it is supposed to go up next year. But borrowing it, uh, against it with a, with a plan that it be paid out of CPA is something that David and I spoke with David Eisenthal and we would like to schedule something to meet with CPA and have that something that is at least that you're aware of, that we're all aware of, how that's another tool that we can be used. And probably the best time to talk about it is before we have a specific project. That's what we were thinking. Let's talk about how it works and how we can leverage what we have into something more. So we do have sort of an underlying plan on how we can move that forward a bit with the CPA. Although we haven't spoken to you yet, so.
Right, we haven't discussed borrowing in quite some time, two years maybe. Our last discussion, I would say the committee was unanimously opposed to it. We like, we like spending, but we don't like borrowing.
Okay.
But as, as the chair, I would be happy to bring it up again and approach it with an open mind, for sure.
I think it's worth a revisit to hear from someone outside of town, how others have used it and what it could, perhaps how could it, how it could expand into larger projects than we'd imagined. And you, you, doesn't mean you have to go with it, but I think it's worth hearing.
Well, certainly if we can use CPA money for architectural design or what we need to do for the building and then see what we need, how much money it's going to be to do the repairs that we want to do to the building and see how we would fund that.
Yeah.
But it certainly wouldn't hurt to explore that opportunity when you have, you know, that amount of money sitting there. And if we can borrow and use it as, what do you wanna call it?
Leverage.
Leverage, then, you know, that wouldn't be a bad thing. It's not that the money wouldn't get paid back or having it as a back to the, to the borrowing.
Yeah, and the source for paying it back is next year's CPA money, so it's not going to give, going to have taxes.
Did you, Paula?
Yeah, certainly we all realize that Goodwin is a very historical and very significant building for us. Municipal Building Committee would really like to have the CPA be part of this whole process right from the inception and like have a liaison from their group and maybe a liaison from our group work back and back with the two different committees to go through this entire process from now, from day one.
Yeah.
So we're not going through a tremendous amount of steps, getting all this stuff done with regard to design and, and budgeting and everything else and find out, well, if we, we might not have the ability by the way we're going to get the CPA money. It would be careful to be, to work together with you, Andy, right from day one here and come up with a, a design or the whole idea of how we can. Use CPA money for what we, we are looking to do.
I'd be happy to come and talk to the Building Committee.
Yeah, I think that would be extremely helpful because what we've been doing in the past is we go through our steps and we send it to them. They go, wow, huh, wish we knew about this.
All I know is I, I don't want it to happen to the Goodwin, what happened to Russell School where we can't make a decision and nobody wants to chip in on the money or kind of think outside of the, outside the box to get this done and then have another $30 million problem on our hands. So I think the town needs the space and we should make use of the building while it's still in good condition.
Yeah, Amy, before this meeting, very kindly gave me the CPA due dates this year. It sounds like it's January 10th and January 13th are, are those review dates or due dates?
The 10th is.
Is the submission date.
Is the submission date?
Right, which is a Friday, I think.
This is a Friday?
We're having three meetings this time, not two.
Okay.
If anyone from the committee shows up.
And we asked that, so it's, it's been good that someone from whoever does the proposal comes to all three, usually. Or, well, it depends, at least two. So when they come and you give a presentation, that's great, so then we understand it. And then, but when we go to vote, sometimes there's questions. So someone there has to be there to answer the questions, otherwise it falls flat. So we.
So, so just with that in mind, you, is there any chance we could put something together for this design phase for that time period? I mean, it's only a few weeks away, so it's not.
Really, other than saying, hey, we wanna do something with the architect that we have on board. Other than that, there's not much we can present by that date, for sure, other than let's try to do something.
Would you be looking for money to do the architectural study or do you already have that on board?
We have some money.
So.
But if we can use CPA money.
To do a, a complete architectural study of all the options, right? Couldn't that be, that proposal be ready for?
I mean, how much would be needed to?
Yeah.
How much was needed for that? How formal, I mean, if they say they need $50,000, is that? And don't have a big description, is that, is that enough to get it passed or?
You just go to the architect and you ask them, how much does it cost to get the study?
Well.
You come to the CPA.
In order for him to do that, we've set up a meeting hopefully next week to start the process. He has to go through the building. He has to then bring in his experts that might be needed. And it takes a while then to go through that entire process. I mean, it's not something he can go say, oh, you're gonna renovate, it's gonna, it'll cost you X amount of dollars for me to do that work.
So just, just for clarity, I just want, so you're, you're asking for proposals to be submitted on Friday, the 10th, and then you guys are meeting on the 13th or whatever it is, and then you're gonna have a few?
We will, it depends on how many proposals we have, right, Lyndy?
Yeah, yeah.
And so we have the two meetings and then we vote on the 3rd.
Also.
The 3rd, February.
And, and why is that?
But why so far advanced of the May 7th or whatever?
That's based on the town meeting timeline of when warrant articles need to be submitted.
But there have been many times in the past where we put a placeholder on there and we don't have the specifics pending a vote of various committees and then we pull the article? I mean, is there any, so I understand why you guys scheduled it that way, but I mean, would you be open to scheduling a meeting a little bit later on for a project like this if it warranted? If it was wanted?
I'm willing to consider it, yeah, you know? One of the strengths of our committees is that we only meet four times a year, so.
Well, in the spirit of teamwork and collaboration for the taxpayers.
Did you say, did you say that was the strength of yours? Whoa.
I'd like someone to spend the money if I talk about it.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
But yes, we have made accommodations for late entrance and emergency proposals and we have in the past and we're happy to do it in the future.
I mean, I don't think we meet again until the 8th, so.
Of January.
Of January, so that's two days before the due date. I don't know if that would.
I don't know, David, if there's flexibility in the timeline, you can push everything back.
The only, the only inflexible thing is they need to post a week before town meeting, so they need to be posting on, what is it, April 29th or something like that?
The rest of the deadlines are self-imposed.
Yeah, self-imposed, just to keep everything moving along.
All right, well, if you think it would be helpful for me to reschedule the meetings for later in 2020, I'm happy to do that. If you have a suggestion.
Hey, how long do you think if you're, you have a meeting scheduled with?
We're getting together with Larry on Thursday.
Okay.
And I can pressure him to give us a timeframe of how he, we told, I told him upfront, this is, this is a hot priority and we need to get something for town meeting. I will get a, get a timeframe on that. I think we can do it.
So next Friday, can you let myself or David know? And maybe we can communicate with Andy and see if we can schedule a harder date?
Certainly.
Does that sound good? Is that okay with you, Andy, or do you need a decision sooner?
No, I can, I can set the meeting days whenever.
Okay.
I want, basically.
Okay.
So, so that'd be fun.
Okay, word. Yeah, that sounds great. Yeah, thank you for accommodating.
And I would encourage anybody who's interested in submitting a proposal to call me beforehand and talk about it. Because there's a, there's the, the new pre-process, which is designed to avoid the, you know, we worked hours on the proposal and the committee says no. Sometimes it happens anyway. Applicants and the committee still said no. But, um, uh, yeah, I'm happy to talk to anybody, even if it's a crazy idea. Maybe there's a way to make it work.
Okay, thank you. Any, anything else on, on that you guys have?
No, I don't think so.
Sound good, so I'll.
No, I'll, I'll bring up something that's probably not, well, it's not on the library. But you guys need a couple of lights for parking across the street. We've been talking about a parking lot, but that's getting pushed down because we didn't even have money to design that. But really, it's quite dangerous crossing the street.
Especially when it's raining out and there's glare in the road.
Um, so a couple of streetlights, there's two poles. Be really safe for everybody coming to any of these meetings.
Gee, if you're a professional at the streetlights by now, aren't you?
I, I swear to God, I'll call. I guess we get after source. I think we can look into it.
Yeah, thank you for.
So streetlights over, over here and, and across the street parking lot?
Yeah, that little parking lot.
Because we've been, you know, like the library, we were meeting the other night and it was raining out and, you know, people were crossing over and then, you know, parking flying around the corner. flying around the corner. It's...
It's dangerous.
It's dangerous.
I think there's, there's a pole right in the corner there and I think there's another pole.
Yeah, there's two, two poles, which would...
They're capable of putting them up. One's, one's a new pole when they did room nine, I think it's, yeah, I think it's possible.
Library used to illuminate, I'm, I'm sorry, the, the church used to illuminate it. Those lights are gone, so we need, we need to get something out there.
That's what I'm trying to... Gary, call Eversource and Chris Okerper this week, but it's probably not going to hit until after a couple of months.
No, I'll make a motion that we pursue adequate lighting for the designated town parking across the street.
Uh, just a question, do we have to have any kind of hearing to put up a streetlight like that, or should we?
Well, this is just to start the process and then we would...
But we don't have any houses that are close by that would really, it would affect...
There's just that one that's for sale, really, and on the corner.
Yeah.
I don't even think we are required to do a hearing for a streetlight, are we?
If you're putting up a new pole, you do have to do a hearing, but we're talking about attaching something to a pole. Don't...
They're both existing, so...
Well, theoretically, we could attach something to the Russell School, you know?
Sure.
Maybe have Chris look at it first.
Have Eversource look at it and see what we'll look at. Something like the LED lights that's back here in, behind the tunnel.
Okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 I have one question, since you brought up the parking over at Russell School. This was something that CPA was asking questions about. So, and then maybe you could just clear it up. If, are you going, are you doing the lot? Are you changing that lot over for additional parking for here at the Russell School? Because when people asked about money for Russell School, they said, well, you don't have a parking anymore, so how can you change?
Well, the, the idea of this parking lot came about maybe two years ago.
Yeah.
Because it's unsafe backing out of those spots onto Middle Street. It probably wouldn't affect whatever happens to Russell School because, as Tim pointed out, for that building to become handicapped accessible, you'd need an elevator which would be on the west side and parking could be in that lower lot for whoever uses if there's additional parking needed.
So that lower lot will still be attached to Russell School?
Well, that lower lot would be parking.
Those are the things we have to work against.
It's just, it's thoughts.
Yeah, I think once you put the parking lot in, it will be utilized by Russell School if we do have future plans for it, so...
There was a lot of questions with CPA when that, when that came up.
I know, we talked about it at a couple of your meetings originally.
Well, we desperately need some safe parking for this building, even the church and everybody in this area. It's got to be done or someone, someone's going to get killed there.
Oh, I think the parking's good. I just didn't know if it was going to limit the, what you can do with Russell School because of it.
Yeah, we talked about that last night, too. The, the consensus was we, nobody really felt that it would be a big detriment in whatever we do with Russell School. Even if, even if we did its partnership, it wouldn't be a detriment on, on its future use. But we, we have to look at our use as a priority. We have serious problems.
And the, the SLAB board wanted our committee to have a subcommittee to look into Russell School, the possibilities, and that committee has been formed. They had one meeting, right? You guys are on it. And so they're, they're moving forward on that. So we really don't know what the possibilities are and they're trying to come up with something for the board and then, but the parking lot was kind of a thing for safety and all the people that uses because even like today, it's jam-packed out there and there's not many people, so...
Okay, great. Thank you all for coming and that discussion and let's hope we can get this on for town meeting. Got one more thing, Andy?
Can I give a quick update on the CPA project about the old maps?
Yeah.
You remember, the town meeting voted $500 to get a preservation plan for the old maps that were in a drawer in Tim's office. And the, I brought them up there and they took them out of the plastic and they inspected them. They said they were in pretty good shape, that mostly they had to undo some previous conservation efforts. And their plan, their preservation plan in a nutshell is put them back in the drawer and not to display them and not to show them. So that's going to be the plan, I guess.
And make copies?
Uh, well, they suggested making copies and showing those, but you can't use CPA money for copies. So I think it's $4,000 to do the actual preservation work. I would be happy to submit a CPA request for this coming town meeting for the $4,000, but that means we'll have to wait until after town meeting to pay the museum to do the work. So I was hoping that we could find a way to pay them sooner and have CPA pay the town back. Otherwise, they would just sit in the museum for, what is it, five months, which the museum said was fine. But those are the two choices.
Yeah, I don't know. Do we know?
So, so the department head meeting today, I presented to the department heads the pots of money that had not been expended for various projects. It's a long list, a lot of money. I, so I've just gone through all the charts of accounts looking for money, that $4,000, and I don't have an answer for you right now. I did not find something that just jumped off the page and said, this is what we could use this money for. So, so I do have, I do have a placeholder on the warrant for $4,000 for this project. I will continue to look at the, the council and I work closely on this and I'll see if I can't find the money looking for.
Of course, I can't guarantee that the CPA committee will approve it and town meeting will vote yes, but I can't imagine they wouldn't.
So you're asking us to front $4,000 with no warranty? Great!
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not asking you to front it. I'm just saying it's either that or wait to get the maps back.
Okay, great.
How much was it to copy it for display?
You know, I don't, I don't remember. You know, they were high-resolution digital copies. They were framed in aluminum and they were going to be beautiful, but it's new.
It's like the Leonard.
Yeah, we talked about showing, displaying them at, at the new library in the history room, but you can't do it.
Well, it'd be good to know how much it would be to take a photo of them or whatever so we could maybe reproduce them in the future, you know?
I bet Colts Library might know because they do that over there all the time from Calvin School and John Updike.
Jennifer, can you put it on screen?
I don't think that you run that through the scanner, unless you don't want it anymore.
All right. We're going to move on off this topic just because we have a lot of stuff to go to, so...
Quite honestly, we need to find a place for them, though.
Okay, yeah.
We really have to figure this out. It is something that is so unique that we should bring out every once in a while as a unique thing in the Hadley House so people can see the originals. But yeah, they, they need to be kept in a dark spot.
Well, the, I'm sure the museum's probably the best place for now and decide what we're going to do with them.
It's fine there. It's better than my drawer.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you, everyone, on that. So we'll go on to, we have a thing here for adult use marijuana. Earlier in the year, we agreed to send out another request for a proposal. In December, we have a bunch of interest in this and so tonight, just looking to the board to look at releasing this RFQ for the second facility here in Hadley.
So moved. What, how much time do we need to put this out there? Because I know the last time around, you gave a reasonable time period and then we had people come after the fact and say, oh, I needed more time. But I'd like to put it out for the basic minimum number, amount of time so we can get professional responses rather than people that are just kind of testing the waters.
Right. So I'm, I'm thinking a six-week turnaround because of the holidays. That, that seems like the fairest turnaround time for something like this. There has been a lot of interest in that second license, a lot of interest.
Of course it has, now that someone else has done the hard work for them.
Any further discussion on this? All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
And then we have our license renewals. We had one to vote on, Chipotle liquor license.
You have more than one.
Oh, we have more than one, okay.
You have more than one. It's...
The PDF, okay.
There you go.
Eleven, yeah.
There is eleven, actually, there's 10 total. I also made paper copies, in case it's not rotating. Actually, any...
Mine's rotated.
Mine's rotated.
Mine's rotated.
Didn't put the...
So, all of these licenses are in good standing. They've all turned in their paperwork. They have no outstanding invoices with other town departments and I recommend that you approve all of these licenses. So moved.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 So we do have eight outstanding. I've been in touch with, I've left messages at least with all of them and most of them are working on it, but they have not completed them yet. As long as they have them in by December 31st, they won't technically be late and they'll be in your first, first meeting. So I feel pretty...
We don't mind taking their extra money for being late.
Well, y'all's original vote was after January 1st, but I'm, I'm sure that somebody will be paying us an additional $100 this year.
Okay.
So, thank you very much.
Always at least one.
Always.
All right, then we had accounting services. So the treasurer and town administrator have been working, did she just step up for a minute?
She just stepped up for a second.
I don't smell any luck.
All right.
I know that.
We can go to sidewalk clearing in case she comes back.
I'll talk to you about it.
Uh, SLAB board, clarify sidewalk clearing in, in the state layout. Current town bylaws governing snow and ice and sidewalks are found at this web link. So I think we were just bringing this back up because last week, this was a point of discussion and forget if we were going to send out letters or what we were going to do.
I don't know. Was there any complaints?
I had a phone call, which I'm in agreement. You really cannot expect the homeowners, business people from West Street to the bridge to actually plow their sidewalks after the DOT plows Route 9 and pushes all the snow from the center of the line up onto both of their sidewalks and they need to probably get a plow truck on the sidewalks to take it off of there because it freezes. Can't do it.
You just can't do it.
I mean, I saw the town loader working out there for almost a full day moving that snow around.
You can't do it. I mean, all I'm, all I'm saying is I think that the businesses in the center of town, because that's where we take care of, should not allow their plowing people to push the snow onto the sidewalks and just keep it within their, in their own yards.
Not even there. I mean, if they're putting it on sidewalks, either the owners or the contractor should be ticketed for it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's weird.
After you've cleared it, yes, absolutely.
I mean, I've been plowing Hopkins and the elementary school and this lot right here and I push everything in. Nothing stays out by the road. You know, it's just, that's, the people don't know how to plow.
But I don't think people on Route 9 should be responsible for the state putting snow on those sidewalks.
I agree. I, the only...
A few more passes, it takes a few more minutes, but there's no reason why they can't clean it up and push it all in on their property.
The one complaint I had that I brought to David's attention was actually my own complaint of PVTA riders having to stand in the middle of Route 9 because of the fact that PVA TA did not manage to clear a single bus stop from the bridge to the Emerson line. And we're talking five, six days, basically, they let it melt.
They were on a couple of channels on the news. They don't clean any, anyway.
And even though they were in here last time asking for additional stops and promising to maintain their stops and everything, and as usual, they haven't done a single thing to maintain their stops. So something to keep in mind next time they come here and ask us for something.
It's going to be a huge liability, too.
It's a liability. But we don't own it, they do.
Well, I saw somebody trying to go from the sidewalk, trying to get into the bus, fell flat on their face right in front of the bus because they tripped in, in the snow bands, trying to get onto the bus in time. I mean, that's, it was nuts.
So that's PVTA, so they own it.
Oh, yeah, but that's also the DOT for not clearing Route 9. I mean, it's their responsibility for the sidewalks.
Yeah, they're responsible for the sidewalks, but PVTA is responsible for their shelters and the actual bus stops of maintaining them and clearing them. They actually have a maintenance, it's a, it's an old retired small bus that they have maintenance guys go around and do repairs and things like that, but they just, they're gone during winter, so...
Well, can we reach out to PVTA and...
Yeah, when I received your, your complaint, I reached out to them and made sure that was in writing, but it sounds like we need to follow up with them. They just don't seem to have performed.
Okay.
Anything else on that? Any votes or anything we want to take or motions? I mean, there's not much without writing a bylaw.
So if you want to, if you want to do a fine, your, your local bylaw right now is underpowered. It's not going to do the job. It's, so we would, if we want to get to a situation where we're fining people or businesses, we need to bring something to town meeting.
So can we send a strongly worded letter in the meantime to those that are blocking the sidewalks here about center of town?
Sure.
A remark, yeah, a reminder to most of the businesses.
Should you check the Dunkin' Donuts? Yeah.
And the basic gist of that is just please don't plow your snow into the sidewalk.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Maybe for a town meeting, we, if, if they don't comply for the rest of the winter, maybe that's something we need to approach.
Well, I'm with that one complaint. I just had one more from here to the post office, but there was only one, one person that walks to the post office, too, so...
You mean here from town hall?
No, from the sidewalk that goes from the Middle Street to East Street.
Did you say only one person walks?
No, only one person complained.
Oh, there's a little more, but I'm like, what would you know?
I'm sure, I'm sure I will get more calls after this meeting, but I have one complaint, somebody does walk to the post office.
Sure.
Down the sidewalk from Middle Street to East Street.
Right, and they couldn't get through.
And that's off on a shoulder. There's a buffer between the road and the sidewalk there where we've, we've done in the past, so...
We used to plow, plow to East Street.
We used to plow all the way to Spruce Hill. The sidewalk goes all the way to Spruce Hill.
Well, I will say, though, surprising after two winters now of not doing the sidewalks under 9, other than a few complaints every year. You know, typically, they're by the same people that are affected and PVTA riders and people that tend to run. There hasn't been very many complaints about it.
Actually, I noticed some of the people that have bought property, some of the older folks in town have actually snowblowed and maintained their sidewalk in front of their property now that were never doing it before down, down along that, from West Street to the bridge. So there's a few parcels that are, are cleaned up, so...
Okay, now we can go back to accounting services. For sure. Administrator has been working on PVPC to join her regional accounting program. Do you guys want to give us an update where you're at right now?
Sure. So I think things are in a good place right now. I had hoped to have signature-ready documents in front of you tonight. That's not going to happen. So we have a plan to go with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, so regional accounting service through Eric Kinsher from Sagamow Beach. We are negotiating the scope of work with Mr. Kinsher as well as the price and we still need to set up a date for that negotiation.
Yes.
Mr. Kinsher cannot start until March 2nd, so to make that bridge from now until March 2nd is one of the survival backup. We've talked to Mary Erickson, who would like to be a vendor to the town to do the routine accounting. We have a price per hour. We're going to put together the scope of services and have that, that ready for your signatures. Because you don't have another meeting in December, I would like, I would ask the board... Because you don't have another meeting in December, I would like, I would ask the board to authorize the chair to sign the two agreements with the understanding that this would come back at your January 8th meeting to be ratified.
So moved.
Well, before we do that, did we get certified free cash yet?
We have not certified free cash.
Oh my God. It said the end of the year.
So we have had Mary Erickson and Susan Golovski today reconcile the CPA and real estate issues, so I think that was the last piece that needed to happen.
Did they reconcile it?
I have not had a chance to check in with them because I was in that meeting on the affordable housing, so I will follow up on that.
I did talk to Susan. She felt that they were very close and they weren't gonna be able to wrap up, so we'll take that up again tomorrow.
Yeah.
So she had sent along, she had done a lot of work and sent it back over to Mary and had some things that she wanted to work with together on the phone, and then Mary wasn't able to come out today, and so hopefully tomorrow.
So we're working on it.
Can you set up a flare or something for town hall and sort of...
Chief, would you let us do a firework here at town hall when that happens?
Firework?
Yeah.
Gotta ask the fire chief. Point the finger.
I've already had a firework. We're looking for it to calm down.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
One of the things, just a quick backup though on the sidewalk thing. No, but it hasn't to do with sidewalks. It has to do with your fire hydrants. We're not doing a very good job taking care of fire hydrants near people's houses, do not helping to clear them away. I drive by different areas. I see people have not taken care of them. Please, God forbid, if there's a fire in your house or your neighbor's house, nobody's gonna get to that fire hydrant. So, you know, we can only do so much within the town, but we're asking for your help. So please help us to take care of that.
So you opened this can of worms, so maybe wasting more of your time, but...
That's okay.
We didn't, the DPW didn't get a chance to put out the wooden stakes before the first snowstorm like they typically do. There's some out there that...
I have seen them now.
They did put in two fiberglass markers that are now attached to the actual fire hydrants that are wooden stakes. They have the corner of Huntington River Drive and Stockbridge River Drive, where the Snowville Trail Cross is right there.
You would know that?
Yes. They've, they've been ordered for all of the other fire hydrants, from my understanding. They're red and white, reflective. They're like eight feet tall, something like that.
I think we approved those at town meeting. I was just looking to see if that was on the voter, that was approved.
Yep, and so in the next week or so, those should be in, and they'll be getting them up as soon as possible, because I've had residents after the last storm that said, I don't even know where my fire hydrant is to start digging, so I said, sorry.
All right. I mean, that was just a please warning. There are no fines for not doing it, but the fine will be when somebody houses go up and you can't take care of it, so...
So, I agree with all of that, and yet the problem is, as in the heavy snowstorm that we had, the street plow comes along and makes it impossible, because it's compacted that snow, to move it. And if somehow, they could, you know, I know there are a lot of fire hydrants in town, but if they could just swing in close to it, clean up where they pushed it, it would be really useful.
I don't know if that's... Actually, what we do is days after.
Right, right.
But we usually just make a pass with the front-end loaders on one side and on the other side. Of course, where the stake is, the stakes aren't there now, so it's pretty hard to see, and rather than clean them up with a machine, break them off.
Right.
Luckily, everything melted this storm.
Yeah.
While we're on this topic, can I ever have an unexpected business item that I need to get a chance to...
Sure.
John, I think you were, you know, a snow blower, or she would trade you a few bucks.
See, you shouldn't have gone here just... Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we were...
Should have saved it for announcements.
Well, we're only in the middle of the snowstorm season here.
Chris mentioned to me that there's an old V plow, we got that skid steer skid loader with town meeting money. There's money left in that budget. What they'd like to do is be able to trade in an existing V plow that hasn't been used in however many years, and use some of the remaining money that's in the skid steer budget now that it's been purchased in that traded money to buy a small snow blower to build on the skid steer for better clearing off the sidewalks, and I think John could probably talk a little bit more about that, but...
We really want to.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so we bought this V plow for the old skid steer that we had fifteen years ago.
There's a V plow on the Mini X gear too, right?
We have two of them, I guess. One hasn't moved or something, right?
So we tried that way back when. It was buried in the back of the pole shed. Then he bought a new one for the Bobcat, the new skid steer. That doesn't work either. It's too rigid of a plow. It has no use in our town with our sidewalks. You know, both of them really should be traded in for a snow blower that would probably utilize some of these positions here on Route 9 and West Street, Middle Street, wherever we plow. I don't know whose spectrum, but and why we ended up with two of them, and the first one didn't work fifteen years ago, but they never changed the design on them, and I was lucky enough to try it myself for the first time again, going, this thing isn't gonna work, and it didn't, so...
So what I'm asking is if I can make a motion that we allow the DPW to trade, since this town property, one of the, the older V plow, I guess.
That's what I was gonna do, trade the old one?
Yeah, get rid of the old one first.
They're both useless, so...
Starting with the oldest one gives the most sense.
It was a bad investment.
And move toward a snow blower with that existing funds.
And can we do that from that article?
So this is a skid steer article with excess money in it.
It's a skid steer attachment.
An attachment to the skid steer.
This was borrowed.
I don't know if it's borrowed money. Is it borrowed money?
Yeah, this was debt exclusion, I think, wasn't it? For that skid steer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, if I remember voting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to take a double check of the language.
I'll have to see what it is and...
It's really, it's just an attachment for the machine itself. It's not...
Right, so it could be considered just part of the original purchase.
Usually, we write these things so that you can cover attachments and things like that. Double check the language. Part of that motion should declare the V plow surplus property.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we declare the old V plow surplus property so that we can be traded, and that if, okay with the treasurer and council, that we use the remaining money toward the snow blower.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Joyce, you started it.
Well, you know, we're here, we are at the end of December, so we have a much longer another part of winter coming, so...
Originally, when we were getting surplus equipment, yeah, way back when, I ended up getting a couple of machines with snow blowers from MIP at one time.
Yeah.
For like a hundred dollars or something. We had to go pick them up, but the snow blowers worked out pretty well. We have used them, and they actually bought a snow blower for the lawnmower that they use right now, so they all do the work.
That's good. All right.
All right, North Hadley Village Hall. So Conservation Commission met last night. I think Alan was there, David was there, but what do you guys have to report back to us on this?
We have the unanimous vote from the Conservation Commission to release the Ball Field from recreational protection, so as soon as I get a certified copy of the minutes, I will be sending that off to the legislature in order to get the votes necessary from the House and the Senate.
Great.
Have we completed the actual petition and all the other stuff that goes along with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're ready to go.
Just ready to go.
Perfect. We don't have to put a match to the building now.
Not yet.
December 31st, huh?
Not yet. Alan, you have a confused look. Is there something you wanted to say?
No, I think this is all great. I was very encouraged by what happened at the commission meeting.
Good.
But there's still that little bit of uncertainty about whether Zaturka Park can qualify or not. I mean, there's periods of opinions about it. I don't know who the ultimate arbiter of that is. It's the same thing that happened in Westfield. Somebody will sue us.
We're not, but Zaturka Park's not part of this?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
But it's already in...
Because in order to get the legislature to, in order to get the legislature to say yes, they're gonna have to see what the replacement, what the replacement acre is, and we're saying it's Zaturka Park. And I think we have a good case for it, but there's an argument on the other side as well. And I don't know who decides that. Maybe the county, the treaty general, or maybe they don't do anything unless somebody, you know, makes an issue of it.
I think we're gonna find out?
Well, we will find out, exactly. And if it does turn out, I hope it doesn't, but it does turn out that we can't use the Zaturka Park, that we'll need a Plan B.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, I don't think we have to have it now, but we have to be prepared to get a Plan B.
Well, the Plan B is...
No, it's not. It's finding another acre somewhere.
Yeah, away we go.
People are using Zaturka Park for sleigh riding and things to it.
Oh, they are? Looks like a good hill.
It's safe, it doesn't go into the street.
I grew up on Hospital Hill, so...
No, you survived.
Okay, anything else on North Hadley Village Hall?
Oh, ready to go.
Conservation restriction on the Kestrel Trust.
It's David's.
David, maybe you could just, David Nixon can just let us know what this is. It has to do with some language in there allowing public access to the land.
All right, so this is the conservation restriction that we passed at the last town meeting. We had sent the language off to council, made a number of changes. We took the votes, and then after the vote, Kestrel Trust noticed that they had overlooked a provision in the language that they found problematic. It has to do on page, I don't remember the pages, I think it's the third page. Yeah, third page, you'll see some highlights in yellow. And this has to do with granting the public the right to access the premises, and as we passed it, the grantor, which would be the select board, grants to the general public the right to access... I'm sorry, I've got this back to front in my mind. What was passed at town meeting was the grantor reserves the right to grant the public daytime access to recreational trails. So you retain all of your rights on the property.
But we didn't actually grant.
You may or may not grant, but they don't like that language. They want you to grant that right to the general public right away. I floated this proposed change past council, and council says it's really up to the select board that there's no upper downside one way or the other. Chair and I were talking about if you had to restrict access to the conservation land because of an emergency, a fire or something like that, giving away your entire rights to the access to the property may not be the best idea.
I'd rather not do it in perpetuity, but I have no problem doing it.
So what Paul Gagnon from Kestrel was saying was that the way it's written now and the way it was passed at town meeting with reserves the right to grant the public access will not be approved by DCR and whoever the attorneys are at the state level, because in order for it to be conservation land and hold a conservation restriction, that has to be open to the public. We do have the ability to place reasonable restrictions on what happens during that time, and I need to check on this again, but my understanding is that if there was a fire or some other thing that we have to say, land's closed, you can't go in there. We do have the ability to do that within reason. We can't do it indefinitely.
It can be capricious, right?
Because it's supposed to be for public use.
Right. So it's up to you. It's, council says that there's no upper downside either way, so...
So I'd like to make a motion that we change it to the original version that grants the general public the right to access the property, so that we can get this motion through to the state.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just...
Yeah, I just would, I think it all sounds good. I mean, the only reasons I could think of us wanting to reserve the right came more to, you know, somebody's living there or something like that, and then it becomes more of like a police matter, you're, you know, this land isn't meant for that kind of thing, but yeah, so I think if this is what will give us the conservation restriction, if that's the holdup, it makes a lot more sense to me, so anyway. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
I voted no on it, so I will abstain from this decision.
Okay. Okay, and then now, senior center library, fire substation updates. Got a lot, lot here, so does anybody want to go first? Joyce, do you want to go first with the fire substation?
I can.
We got a change order there.
We have a change order. I think I sent you all the paperwork today. The change order is for behind the building, where there was going to be a grass area, and it was kind of small, but bothersome behind the building itself, where it would have to be mowed and taken care of or re-whacked and stuff going up against the building. So what they decided is that there should be a grade around there where they would install drainage system, which would be rocks or pebbles, and they would install fabric and two-inch riverstone mulch in that area so that we wouldn't have to, it almost would become like a patio area behind the fire, subfire station. So all in all, the total price on that was eleven thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy cents. So it would be for the landscaper, carl site work on that. They just figured it would be better drainage behind there to and away from the building.
So moved.
Six seconds.
Any further discussion in there? All those in...
So this is for drainage, it's not a patio?
No, but they're making it an area that could be used if you wanted to put a picnic table there, but I mean, instead of putting grass in that area and having to think where, you know, how it goes in between the buildings over here, over the, you know, the other fire station, you got all that stuff going up against the building, where you're not gonna have that behind this building, so...
They actually ended up stoning that in the back of the existing police and fire station.
Yeah, so that makes a lot more sense to do that.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So we've moved along. We've, I think one of the things that we looked at last night also was, is that the comments were made about leaving a lot of this building open to weather, and we wanted them to take a look at that and make sure that if, you know, they're gonna have this open before the roof gets put on or whatever, they need to start covering it so that, you know, it's not gonna cause any damage to what's been put up there already. So that was gonna be brought back to these people that are building it at this point to see, make sure that they get that taken care of. Concrete slab work is done, the building rough framing, steel stair insides, mezzanine is being put up and done. Underground utilities, rough site grading work is done, binder course is on. So we're all on, and we still have a contingency of six hundred and forty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Can you yell at Phil or whoever's in there to lock their site gate, because they've been throwing the lock in the padlock in the middle of the driveway and leaving it there for days on time?
Oh, I text Phil tomorrow morning, lock their gate.
I mean, they're closing it, but...
Yeah, they're not locking it, okay? Will do, thank you.
All right, do you want to do, senior center, Jane, do you want to give an update on the constru...
I need your signature on this and...
I have it.
You have it? Okay, you gotta have it.
Yeah, I have a stack of them. I'm just gonna do them at the end.
Jane, do you want to give an update on the construction portion?
Senior Center, just moving along, the finished, well, plumbing is done except Senior Center, moving along, the finished, well, plumbing is done except the fixtures, obviously. The wiring is continued, the audiovisual wiring is starting this week and will run through two weeks. The ceiling above, anywhere there would be wiring, has been insulated and is starting to be sheetrocked. It's really an exciting building to look at.
And then I just had a few things update, schedule update in our packet here, just because of some of the delays on the site, finding things buried in the ground, other just, you know, site-related delays, those kind of things. Forish has asked for a schedule extension request that would move our substantial completion date from March 2nd to April 1st. However, we think that the final completion will still remain at April 29th. We know additional charges for this, it's just purely trying to get everything done in time, and the building committee voted, I think it was unanimously, to accept this change. Nobody sees anything, you know, ill intentions for this change, it's just based on the site conditions. So we will be getting, in our next change order, acknowledgement of this scheduled change, but we don't have to, and that will be that complete changeover order, so we have like the PCOS, so those add up, and then at a certain point, we do the whole change order for everything, just be acknowledging that schedule change in this. So I don't think we need to vote on this, I'm just giving you this notification that we had that slight change in schedule.
Do you wanna vote on the schedule change, so that way, I mean, that sounds pretty simple?
Yeah, I mean, we had sixty days between substantial completion and final completion, and now we only have thirty days, but it doesn't, everybody feels pretty comfortable with it right now. And a big reason too is the paving can't happen until mid-April.
Yeah, the luffrosh, the...
So, you know, that's one of the big things.
Do you wanna vote for it?
Sure, yeah, we could vote for it.
In January?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the substantial completion date change to April 1st.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I think we oughta make it clear too, on the sprinkler system from last week...
I wanted to do that too, yes, I did wanna do that.
Because there was a discrepancy there, and speaking with the fire chief on that.
That was the next thing on my list here, so thank you, Joyce. Yeah, I did wanna clarify, last week if it came across, that the fire chief was going around and saying, we need this here, we need this here, it was not anything like that, it was purely, there was some confusion on the design side. I met with Phil and the fire protection engineers and the fire chief this week to kind of go through the whole thing, and they're all, it's a lot of steps between the actual design and the installation. The fire chief had been given some drawings that were incorrect, and then when he went to look at the site, he noticed that, you know, there were discrepancies between the design, what was actually there, so what he came up with were code violations that he found that they needed to do to increase the safety of the building. It was nothing about him with his own agenda doing anything, it was purely meeting code, so, he's doing a great job.
So let me put this in straight language here. It was another oversight by the engineers, is this correct? I know you don't wanna admit that, but that's what happened.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we need to put this on the list for the end of the year of what we're...
How much are we holding on this project?
We did just get eight thousand dollars back from the engineers.
No, for the final, for the final on this project, how much are we holding back that we were going to be negotiating with all these?
Need final payment.
Yeah, final payment.
Retainages, you can...
Percent?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll have discussion at the end of this project.
Yeah, we can discuss it at this point, so, anyway, it was not the fire chief's fault, it was more on the design side, so, anyway. Clarify that.
So who's got the running tally?
Oh, I've got a list.
Don't worry, we'll keep a track.
I think I have it here somewhere. Then we had three PCOS, downspout boots, insulation work, rift cut wood doors that the finance subcommittee approved this week, they're all, add up to less than ten thousand dollars, so those we did vote to approve, and I'm just seeing if I have anything else. Oh, yeah, one other thing, but we'll talk about that later. I think that's everything. Is that everything?
So you just need a vote on the change orders that were already approved?
I don't know how we're handling that when it's under the amount.
I think they're supposed to bring it to us, right?
If it's under ten thousand, the subfinance committee had ability to approve it, is what we agreed to.
But then if it got to an aggregate amount, it had to come...
Squeaky.
Squeaky clean with the, if you wanna take another vote.
Yeah.
Sure.
Except the recommendations...
I mean, they're only nine hundred twenty-two dollars, seventeen hundred dollars, they're small.
So motion to accept the recommendations from the finance subcommittee for these three, three change orders?
I'll second that.
And they are, okay, PCO nine, R1, I'm just gonna read them for the minutes, but PCO zero thirty-one, PCO zero thirty-two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Ted, if you have...
Oh, no, one more thing, I'm sorry, there was one more thing. So, we, part of the project is furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, that was all sent out to bid, separate contract, we got the bids back, the low bid was a hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars and forty-four cents from Interscape. I believe the budgeted amount was a hundred ninety-five thousand that we had in there, and so we just need to vote to enter into the contract with Interscape to provide the, this furniture to the senior center.
So are you saying this is the first thing since shovels have been in the ground that came under budget?
Everything's under budget.
So we'll...
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I think that's...
So, quick update on the library, well, first of all, ladies and gentlemen, if you haven't driven by, we have a building, so you can see the tariffs at work, so our steel, steel beams are going up right now, based on the update we got at our library building committee, meeting the other night, everything's on schedule. You should expect to actually see that that beam work will continue for a while, and they'll, what was explained to us is that they will immediately start trying to close the building up, so there's a whole process for that, and they'll do the best that they can, you know, given the possibility of inclement weather and all of that, but should be obvious that things are moving along pretty well. And we spent far more time talking about the color of the mullions and mun... munions?
Munnions.
Yeah, that was, that was a great conversation, only to find out that there was more information and we have to have an emergency meeting to continue that conversation. But all is well in that regard, so, you know, no, at this point, again, we don't have any change orders or anything that need to be discussed. Fundraising continues to go along well, I think the bulk of it was reported at the last meeting, but, you know, more contributions are rolling in, so that's, that's very positive in that regard.
So East Hampton Savings Bank went toward that?
East Hampton Savings Bank was a part of it, I think the biggest one so far is People's Bank gifted, or is giving us fifty thousand dollars over a five-year period, is that right? Yeah. And, yeah, and then, you know, some generous support from the community members and local businesses as well. So, again, I would imagine, especially like the visual, when people actually see it going up, it'll remind people, and, so, we hope that that positive experience will continue. At the last meeting, we talked a little bit about the library and senior center rental agreement, but we were talking about this opportunity for the library to secure a hundred thousand dollar grants, and be really predicated on the lead certification, and having the solar would go a long way in solidifying that. So at last week's meeting, we talked about going back to the town treasurer to find out what the actual accounting numbers are, so Linda graciously put together that information for us. So it looks like in FY nineteen, which is closed, and it sounds like it would be a bit problematic to try to move any of that money around potentially, no?
Well, we wouldn't go back into nineteen and change those figures, what it would be at, we could, and the amount paid in nineteen, in fiscal nineteen, was the three months at the five thousand six hundred fifty rate, which was almost seventeen thousand, sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. So, when your question was, can we go change, can we change nineteen? No, we can't change nineteen. What we can't, what we're hoping we can do is, in twenty, do a reimbursement to, so it all stay in twenty, and the end impact would be the same, I suppose, a technicality. And, and then you asked if I was sure that we could do this, I actually did write to the auditor, I sent an email, we don't really have the full level of accounting access that we used to have, and we're, I'm trying to, I've been trying to get an answer there, and I did write to the auditor, and so hopefully, we can be told, sure, even though it was in nineteen, yes, you can take care of that in twenty, because we're dealing with capital articles and the town's own money that the town has borrowed for these purposes, and you're talking about a purpose that could rightly come under either of the articles in the first place. So I've expressed it as a, as a, as a cash flow issue, that one, one budget coming in tighter, and just seeing if we can do a correction at this point, an adjustment within twenty for the nineteen expense, so, you know, I have a hundred percent on that, but that's what I'm going for.
So the, the total dollars we're talking about is fifty thousand and twenty dollars, so as Linda said, it's the three months from FY nineteen, then what has been paid, as well as what would be expected to be paid prospectively. And, so again, you know, I think, given, given the level of contingency remaining in the senior center, to the extent it looks like it's not gonna be harmful to them, and it can only help secure that hundred thousand dollar grant, and on the side of full disclosure, I mean, it's, it's possible that we could get the grant anyway, but why, you know, in my mind, why take a chance, it just seems like a no-brainer.
Make a motion?
Oh, yes. Well, I was just waiting to say this. So I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that we effectively change the accounting for the rental space paid to the parish center on behalf of the senior center to no longer come from the library funds, but be drawn from the senior center building project budget.
Second. You said no longer be, do you also, are you gonna do a step motion, or you mean that to include also, and to effectively...
And to effectively restate what has already occurred.
To the extent allowed.
To the extent allowed, right. Right, 'cause if you could come back and say, no, can do, I'm mad, and that would...
Okay, any other discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
We never actually offered public comment, I don't...
Oh, yeah, is there anyone here for public comments tonight? Thank you for pitching that. Anyone wanna say anything? Linda? And thank you, Linda, for getting these numbers and working through the accounting, I was gonna say that after that, we appreciate that, in our current state, thank you for...
Oh, sure, we have, we have a lot going on. You're not meeting for, was it four or five weeks? We are spending a lot of money right now, and I know that we have this standing policy that, that we pay bills based on David's line and the accountant's signature. So this is gonna be a lot more than usual going out over the next five or six weeks, so I would ask that you pay closer attention, come on in and take a look at it, we're gonna be, in this timeframe, changing accountants, and, again, wanting to, I know there's a five hundred thousand dollar bill that's gonna happen right now, and it's not, hasn't been paid yet, so that's something that, if you could just check in on those a little more regularly than, than you might otherwise, that would be really helpful.
If you can just send us an email when you have a stack...
That's great.
Right, I would, yeah, I will try and get them scanned out as I usually do and out to you.
You don't call everybody, just me?
With particular notes. I'll call attention to things, how about that? I'll call attention more than I usually do.
You just, Jennifer just texts and says, where are you?
Yeah.
And then we know that we need to come in.
With hearts and flowers, though, it's very gentle.
We will work together.
All right.
And town administrator report, that's on that.
Okay, well, we gave a report last week, so not a whole lot that's changed.
That's what you always say. Let's see, David, what you'll do tonight.
No change?
No, 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 no change, not a lot of change. We had our final meeting with the affordable housing study, people from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission under the DLPA grant, they're going to submit a final report. We've agreed that there's articles that should be presented to the select board for inclusion at the annual town meeting, having to do with continuing this project, and so this seems to have been a successful effort, paid for by a grant, and addressing some of the issues that were raised jointly by the planning board and the select board, so this is moving forward in a very positive way. Community development block grant, okay, so the application due date is March 6th, we need to have a public hearing two weeks in advance of that, so we're really talking about something towards the end of February. We've put together a working team, consisting of senior services director, Jane Nevin-Smith, the building inspector, board of health member, me, and a planner from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and we'll be setting up a meeting in the next week or so to get that application Still waiting to hear back from Mass DOT about a stakeholders meeting, November revenues are not in yet. We got the tax rates certified, so working with the collector's office, we're able to get the bills out before the December 31st deadline, and now we're working on getting the free cash certified. And then we have a ballot vote coming up on the debt exclusions on December 19th, polls are open from noon to eight, and that's at Hopkins Academy. February 4th, budgets and articles are due, February 19th, I'll be presenting my budget. March 3rd, Super Tuesday, primary, presidential primary, April 14th, annual town elections, and May 7th is the annual town meeting. And we were talking, we were just coordinating calendars about the public forum for that town meeting, so we'll come up with the date for that.
Okay. Any announcements?
I have two. Don't like them at this time of the year, so it's hard. Our condolences to Judy Barstow Stone on the passing of her son, Harry. Judy lived in, grew up in town here, she's part of our historical commission, and she, I also worked with her at the hospital as a nurse, so condolences to her and her family. Also on the passing of Joe Kowal, worked with his wife at the hospital too. My husband actually said he delivered newspapers with Joe back in their younger days, so Joe grew up in town, went to school here, and certainly he'll be missed by his family and friends, and so condolences to his family.
His daughters live in town.
His daughters live in town, yeah.
I have one here, lunch with Santa and Mrs. Claus, Saturday, December 14th, 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m., at the Hadley Elementary School Cafe. Santa will arrive by fire truck around 12:20, and then I also know that, what's up?
Stuff the truck.
Oh, stuff the truck.
And the cruiser.
Is then?
Yep.
Okay, stuff the truck is then as well. Bring your own camera pictures for Santa and Alex. I should've brought this before, he did just hand it to me. Go ahead.
Also on Saturday, UMass Police, Hadley Police, Sunderland Police, I think will be assisted by the fire department as well, we are doing an event called Hop on Top from 7:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m. at Walmart, where we will be on the roof freezing. We are accepting toys, we are accepting clothing, we are accepting dry goods and canned goods and food, which we'll donate to various different places, and we also got some really amazing donated raffle prizes, that all the proceeds for a donation for it to be entered into the raffle will be going to the Special Olympics. So we're raising money for that, and we're also collecting items for donation for toys, as I mentioned, clothing and food.
Can we give an example of an amazing raffle prize? Can we give an example of an amazing raffle prize?
There are, Lauren, her, Lauren's entire office is filled with stuff, it's, it's crazy. There's, there's-
Hotel stays, massages.
There's, um, I think Sean from Four Seasons is, um, doing another one of his, uh, uh, blue trees, and yeah, there's some good stuff. Well, I saw a blender in there, I mean, I don't even know what you're talking about.
Something, where'd you, where'd you get your raffle?
So, we're gonna, we're gonna put as much of it as we can. Um, I actually stopped by Dave Berterra's house tonight, a former Hadley officer, he makes those wooden, uh, American flags.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, he donated one of those. Um, so, we're gonna put as much of it as we can out in front of Walmart, so folks can take a look at what they're, you know, donating for, for the, uh, but obviously, the, you know, the proceeds are more important where they go, so.
And this is on this Saturday?
This, this Saturday from, I think, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Okay, did you happen to look at the weather forecast of a hundred percent chance of rain?
Uh-huh.
Okay, just in case.
It's all part of the fun.
So, is it-
That's a good word I use, for sure, yeah.
Is it Chinese raffle like that, or is it buying tickets?
I don't know what that is.
Well, I ought to, I had to alert you to what the Chinese raffle is.
There's two different ways you can do a raffle. Um, the way the raffle laws are set up, we're gonna do it in a donation style, so if you donate a certain amount of money you're entered into the raffle, we'll give you a raffle ticket for it. Um, we can do it another way, but there's costs involved, and then you have raffle permits and all the other stuff, so.
State approval.
State approval and everything else.
The other Chinese raffles, you buy a bunch of tickets and then you can put them in whatever you want.
Yeah. No, I don't think we're gonna do that. We have, there's way too much stuff.
Okay.
It really is, it's amazing. People, I mean, a lot of the, uh, stores in, in Hadley, they came through big for us, so, or for the Special Olympics.
They're pretty good stores, aren't they?
You do not have to be present to win, we will take care of that, we'll do the drawing and, and notify folks.
You don't have to go by the roof?
And if you buy a ticket, stick your name sticker, turn every stone.
Yeah, yeah, make, make sure you put the right ticket, you put the right ticket.
What are you going to the roof just then?
Yeah, yeah, it's just the kind of thing that they-
I'll go on the roof if, if, if they give me a lift up on the hook and ladder.
Yeah, well, we're, we're still trying to figure that part of it out. That's the part we might need the Fire Department to, 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 to.
How's our liability insurance?
I know, yes. Okay, and, uh, yeah, so, uh, you could go to Walmart before or after you see Santa at Hadley Elementary.
And the time again is seven to-
Seven to five.
Seven to five, okay.
And Hadley Elementary Santa, twelve to two.
Oh, I'm right there.
Same day.
Absolutely.
And the, uh, kids at Hadley Elementary, their Christmas concert's tomorrow at 7:00 p.m., I know that.
Evening one this time, huh?
Yeah, well, afternoon too. Do you want to go at one or seven?
Oh, two of them?
Yeah.
Wow.
Mm-hmm.
Nice.
Anybody else?
I was just going to say the, uh, holiday decorations are looking great around town. Uh, it seems to be more than in the past, and, uh, Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Yeah, Merry Christmas to all of you. This will be our last meeting, until, see you next year.
Oh, yeah, that's my big year. All right, so, uh, we are going to have an executive session, I believe. Um, I don't know if someone wants to make a motion?
We're going to executive session. For provisions of National law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, um, if an open meeting might have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of this public body, and if it's shared in different places, and we are talking about dispatches.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, as Chair of the Hadley Select Board, I state that the Board has moved and seconded to enter into executive session, and then I state that discussing the matter in open session will have an adverse effect on the town of Hadley. We'll call a vote, please. Oh, we will not reconvene in open session, thank you.
Most good.
Yes, Bill.
Yes.
Steven.
Yes.
Yes.